Want to call the order of the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for September the 23rd, 2024. We ask that everyone please stand at this time for our prayer and pledge of allegiance be given this morning by our Commissioner Lee Bogle. Commissioner?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time and this opportunity to come together to conduct business on behalf of the county and that we represent the citizens here and we hope that the majority of citizens or that we can work on behalf of them and that the decisions made here today will be pleasing to you. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the protections that you provide for us and the many blessings and we hope that we can take time to notice each one of those blessings every day. Heavenly Father, we just want to watch over our, I hope you watch over our emergency services personnel and our military as they work to protect us and work to protect this nation and our state and our county and that you would bless, continue to bless them and watch over and guide them. In your son's heavenly name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Secretary, would please call the roll and termination of quorum.
Jim Everwater, Jeff Phillips, Mike Kush, Lee Bogle, Charlotte P., Trey Gooch, Chip Pinion, Marvin Whitworth, Jim Thompson, Hettis Reed. We have the quorum.
Who have our quorum? We'll ask this time to have the approval of our minutes and I'll ask that the Vice Chairman read our minutes or ask for that approval for September 9th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes for September 9th and also have the minutes to sign for August 26th to well to make those official and they are both found to be in good order. Therefore, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Have a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, minutes have been approved. Public comment period?
Sorry, no, sir. Nobody signed up for public comments.
Okay, we'll move then into items withdrawn or deferred.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The agenda that you have that's on the screen as well as on your iPads has been updated, just a couple of things. We did have one site plan that was pulled off the agenda. That was the True Gospel Church.
Yeah.
And the Hunter Brothers too. Yeah, we had both of those that were going to be on the agenda. Actually, I don't think the True Gospel actually made it onto the agenda in the first place now that I say that, but Hunter Brothers has been pulled off the agenda. And we did add on the Mac Bird subdivision just for your information. I think I put that in the email on Friday.
Okay, sir. Thank you. We'll move then into our new business, starting with item seven. A submitted for preliminary plan approval. Item one, Bylow Landing Subdivision, 241003, nine lots on 5.01 acres, zoned RM, located along Wilson Overall Road. Janet Abram is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. The applicant is proposing, as you can see on the plat that's on your iPads and also on the big screens behind us, develop a nine lot subdivision. This would be eight buildable lots with one detention pond located along Wilson Overall Road. This would be on conventional septic systems, not a step system as the lots and the number of lots just wouldn't support something like that. All lots do exceed 15,000 square feet, which is the minimum for this district. Most of our comments regarding preliminary plans have been addressed. There's a lot of information that was submitted that was on this plan set that really is better reserved for the construction plans. The applicant and their design engineer know that there's a lot of work that still needs to be done on those. I will also point out that the last page on that plan set is their mail kiosk plan. As you can see on this page that's on lot seven, they're going to have the area for the mail kiosk. Mike's kind of highlighting it there on the screen. That site plan is still a work in progress. I don't think that needs to be completed before this is approved, allowing them to move forward. We'll just make sure that those comments get addressed during the construction plan phase. So with that, staff would recommend approval of this and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Missus, any questions, comments? Have any questions, comments for that?
Could you pull up a map?
Yes.
I mean, this is very uncharacteristic for this area.
There's been a couple of other developments in this area. I think the estates at Wilson Overall is one, is about 30, 35 lots right to the south of this. Similar type of development as far as the size of the lots and conventional septic and those kinds of things.
Yeah, the Wilson Overall Estates are the three five acre parcels to the south of this parcel. So they essentially are going to be another cul-de-sac next to the Wilson Overall Estates. So it's very similar and it's under construction right now. It's nearing infrastructure completion.
So you said there is similar construction next to it?
Yes.
How far out in the county is that?
It is, are you talking in comparison to the city limits?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the city does have quite a few big developments a little bit farther to the west on Bradyville Pike. You could see this one under construction here. There's another one under construction, Veals Road, and I can turn on City Limits.
There's also to the southeast of that large development that Mike pointed out right there where he's highlighting, that's Fox Camp Retreat. That's a county subdivision right there with, it was a planned development. It had some townhomes and also 10,000 square foot residential, single-family detached lots as well.
City Limits is not seeming to work on this map, but try a different map. Yeah, so this is City Limits here, the kind of the pinkish color. Oh, it's around the corner from it a little bit, mile and a half.
I believe the applicant is here this morning. Like to have any questions?
I'm not familiar. Who is this developer and who is the engineering firm?
The engineering firm is a gentleman by the name of Chet Rhodes, Rhodes Engineering. They're out of middle Tennessee area. What, is there an address on there, Mike?
Columbia.
Columbia. So they're not local to Rutherford County, but in the area. Ms. Abraham is here and she can certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Developer, who's the developer? What's their address?
Well, she's present in the audience. That's what I was saying.
Why don't we just go ahead and we'll ask that the applicant come forth. There's time to answer any of your questions. This applicant is here? Just come forward. Come right up here. Stand right behind there and give us your name, address. Mike there, okay?
Janet Abraham, 4409 Smoky Mountain Place, Aniak, Tennessee. Janet Abraham, the owner for that one, the developer too. So my address is 4409 Smoky Mountain Place, Aniak, Tennessee, 37013.
Questions for the applicant?
Question I've got, I guess more maybe for staff as well. Just looking at the width on the road, is that 24-foot wide kind of standard width and will the driveways be deep enough to accommodate the traffic? Because that's the biggest thing I see in some of these is being able to get down the road whenever the folks park out on the street and it makes it pretty tough to get down the street. What's kind of standard and what would we expect on that?
These will be the standard 40-foot front setbacks. So they'll have 40 feet from the front of the house to the edge of the right of way.
Of course, that's assuming that it's built right on the front setback line. That these are, you know, like I said, standard 15,000 square foot lots. So, you know, outside of soil, you know, they'll have room to be able to move around if they need to.
These will be curbing, it's a curb and gutter subdivision. So they'll have all the, I guess, the bells and whistles that go with that, a larger cul-de-sac that the fire department wants, so.
Thank you, Ms. Abraham.
Doug, Mike, let me ask a quick question. The detention pond that's there, is that on a lot? And if it is, who's responsible for the maintaining of that? Is it a HOA situation or is it a homeowner situation?
No, it'll be an HOA and it'll be a common area lot. Lot seven, like Doug said, will have the kiosk on it and the stormwater management area. We don't have the final construction plans yet. They did submit a lot of other sheets along with this preliminary, but that's something we'll have to work out next is the construction plans. Make sure they're up to our standards.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff, please. Mike, I'm assuming that you've looked at the septic field analysis on all of these lots and 45 minutes is really good for this county. I mean, certified by reputable soil scientists that this is really what they have to work with and all of these type homes, four-bedroom homes potentially will fit on these lots?
Yes, right. They will all have to get permitted through TDEC, the septic system permit. So all of the soils has to be done by a licensed soil scientist. So the, TDEC would review those and make sure everything's adequate. But yeah, I thought this site had a lot of good soils. I don't have the map with me, but it's pretty good. Lowman and Cumberland, I believe.
Doug, do staff have a recommendation?
Our recommendation was for approval, just subject to our comments regarding the kiosk site plan and also the, all the other items to be addressed during construction plan review.
Right. This is the first step of many, yes.
Motion made to approve. And a second. Further discussion?
I wanted to ask, this is within the urban growth boundary?
I don't think so. Sorry, the map's moving slow.
Yeah, without having the map here, you know, just to confirm, but I don't think the UGB from Murfreesboro goes that far out.
Not quite. It's that bluish grayish patch.
Doesn't miss it by much, but it's not in it.
Just outside of it. And these are 15,000 square foot lots that lay?
Yes, minimum.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, one no. It does pass. Moving down to item two. Richmond's Retreat, Section 6, 241005, eight lots on 4.2 acres, zoned RM, located along Rayland Avenue. KM Group LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This development, as you stated, located along Rayland Avenue, which is off of Richmond's Retreat Boulevard, along Shelbyville Pike, Highway 231 South. This will be an additional section to the Richmond's Retreat subdivision. It's not part of the planned development. This part was not part of the original planned residential development that was approved several years back, but it is still zoned residential medium density and it is going to utilize the existing step system for the development. The plan is to extend Rayland Avenue into a cul-de-sac. As you can see, Mike's got it pulled up there and you can see it also on your iPads. The status of the remaining property, you can see there's where lot 125 is kind of toward the southeast of that property. Again, Mike's highlighting it. There's some additional land that goes all the way down to, I believe, is that Walnut Grove?
Walnut Grove.
Yeah, Walnut Grove Road that is basically going to remain private property. However, there's discussions going on with a couple of those adjacent property owners about taking some of that. You can see there's an existing driveway there to that existing house right there off of Walnut Grove Road so that there are negotiations going on. If that doesn't happen, you know, they'll have to work out the particulars of how that's going to remain. It can't just really be a lot in and of itself. And I guess I've talked too long, so I'll be quiet now. But with that, most of our comments on this have been addressed. It was actually, again, this was as regarding preliminary plans, pretty straightforward, it's pretty small. This isn't a whole lot different than the one we just looked at, about eight lots or so. All the lots are a minimum of 15,000 square feet and up. These lots are actually larger than the lots in the Richmond's Retreat proper development. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and Mike, if you had any further comments as well.
This is the first step of many. Construction plans will be next and that's something that we'll have to address. They will have a stormwater detention pond on lot 130, but if that needs to be larger, we will have to come up with some additional land somewhere else. Staff is a little concerned about the ground that it's sitting on. Forms a little depression and we want to make sure that new pond doesn't impact the adjacent property. So we're just making sure. That's something that we'll look at closely during construction plan review.
Questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So these, one, two, four, seven, seven lots, eight lots? Seven lots? Three, four, five, six, seven. These seven lots are going to tie onto the existing septic system. Is that right?
Yes, sir. The existing step system for Richmond's Retreat.
Plenty of capacity?
Yes.
Okay. And like you said, this is the first step of many. So unless, if you're looking for a motion, I would make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. And a second for the comments.
I'm sorry, Mike. All of those points that you brought up, you're comfortable with the preliminary with the, okay, very good.
Yes, sir. They will, like Doug mentioned earlier, there is a little encroachment on the back of lot, let's see, 125, 126, back over here, the adjacent property kind of built over. So they'll have to clean that up. We don't want to create an encroachment with this new plat. So they'll have to adjust it somehow, either remove the driveway or change the lot lines a little bit. Excuse me.
Motion, Mike, was with staff comments. Thank you.
No further comments. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it is approved. Moving now into B, submitted for final plat approval. Number one is Bonnie B. Moore, subdivision 242075, two lots on 6.13 acres, zoned RM, located along Buckeye Valley Road. Bonnie Moore Estate is the applicant. Includes a waiver creating a lot less than five acres. Access is by private easement. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to take these three lots as they currently exist and reducing them from three to two. So lot one will contain the existing residence on the property. Lot two will be a new building lot. Now parcel 61.06, which is the northernmost of the three, is going to become part of lot two, which is currently landlocked. There doesn't appear to be any kind of a record of an access easement to that property though. So this plat actually is going to increase the size of that lot from 1.1 acres to 3.38 and also adds the 50-foot ingress easement. So since it's less than five acres, we did have to bring it to you for your consideration. But the waiver being that it's less than five acres still, however, we feel that this is actually improving the situation. It's taking three lots going down to two and the lot, although it's still under five acres, is actually almost tripled in size and this formalizes that easement as well. Quite frankly, if it wasn't for the fact that this was a landlocked situation, if they were just reducing it from three to two, this would be an administrative plat. We wouldn't have had to bring it to you, but the need for the waiver is what brought it here. Other than that, this plat's in good order. And again, we do recommend approval of this because we feel it's improving the situation. So we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Missus, comments, questions? We'll accept a motion. Motion to approve. Second. Further comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Number two is Mac Bird Subdivision, 242019, three lots on 14.91 acres, zoned RM, located along Ammival Road. Mac E. and Diane Lynn Bird are the applicants. Includes an off-site soils waiver request. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. You're not going to find anything on your iPads regarding any staff comments on this. This was kind of a late addition to the agenda, so we just figured we'd just explain it when we got here. This subdivision plat did go through our review processes. We were actually getting to the point where we're getting ready to record it, but didn't realize that there was a sole easement there, which you can see on, I believe that's lot two, which is actually going to be for lot three, because it looks like the property line is splitting the, is the existing sole site. So that's the reason for that. This plat is in good order. Again, this is a similar situation to the one we just looked at. If it wasn't for the fact that this easement was needed, we could have handled this administratively. So, you know, we've got two tracks in the back, five acres. I believe this is a family situation as I understand it. But with that, again, we're just looking for a recommendation for approval on this so that they can go ahead and record their plat as it is. With that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for the comments. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving now into C, submitted for site plan approval. Number one is premier fencing buildings two and three, 243012, construction on two, 9,600 square feet for a total of 19,200 square feet, buildings on 10.17 acres that will be used for general contracting uses. Zone CG and CS, located along Old Nashville Highway. Premier Legacy Real Estate is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The site plan for the first building on this property was approved back in June of 2021. There was an addition to the first building that was approved by the planning commission a little earlier this year, back in May. They're proposing now to move forward with the two additional buildings closer to the front of the property. And you can see, and this was always part of their plan, you can see kind of toward the front, there's a future commercial building along the frontage as well. That's, again, not what under, is what under consideration tonight. It's the buildings two and three that we're considering. The main access along Old Nashville Highway to the back of the property for that first building was approved and installed as part of that first approval. So there's nothing additional needs to be done there. However, they will be adding additional parking area. There'll have to be additional landscaping and those kinds of things done as well. From staff standpoint, most of our comments have been addressed. I'm going to let Mike handle any additional comments that the engineering may still have on this.
Okay. Now, this has been a little bit of a frustrating project. I think they've finally got it ready for approval. Preparing for the meeting this past week, I did notice another thing I need to tell the design engineer about. This main access drive that Doug was talking about, and I'll zoom in to here, is, creates kind of like a dam for the natural ground around it. This future building will kind of block the flow, what's on the front of the site, but there is a little pocket here that can hold water. I was just, I don't know if Bill noticed that yet or not, but you might want to extend a pipe over Bill to pick up this low area. This, the natural ground kind of goes towards the middle and then curves back. The site will raise up in the middle and kind of form more of a dam. So you might trap some water in here and that's the reason we think another pipe might be needed right here. But that wasn't part of the original comments. That's just something I noticed when we were preparing for the meeting. So, but they have addressed most of our comments and other than that, I think they're ready for approval.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make clear or in the form of a question, I guess, when we looked at the initial proposal for this, where all of these other buildings suggested on that initial proposal?
Yes, they were. Yes. They didn't have the grading and drainage. They just had a layout of where they wanted to propose the additional buildings.
Mike, those comments you made are not part of this site plan?
Well, that last comment about needing an additional pipe and maybe an area drain or something to catch this water, this, the natural ground, see, they're building up the pads for the buildings and the parking and they have to leave the rest of the ground where their septic system is located. They have to leave it as is. But to prevent water from getting trapped in a little area and flooding their septic system, I think they need to look at possibly putting in another storm drain, just an addition that I, that we missed earlier and I apologize that they didn't know that earlier, but we, you know, we think that it'll be important. So this site and then the future building front in Old Nashville Highway will drain to a pond in between the first building and the second and third buildings, kind of in this area here. So the pond was designed for all of the site, so we're comfortable with that. It's just that we got to make sure we can get all the water to it and make sure that nothing floods.
I'm not sure what you just said.
Sorry.
Is this thing ready or not?
Yes, sir. It is ready. It is ready now. It is ready now. It was frustrating because we had to bump them before and I don't, I won't go into that, but I think they've finally gotten everything ready to get it approved.
Those comments that you just made, are they on this site plan?
Yes. Well, except for the last one, needing that additional pipe.
Which is now, which is now part of that.
Now part of this meeting.
So approval would be contingent upon your comments?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion has been made to approve and we have a second over here on it. Further comments? With none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving into number two, Highway 231, Church of Christ, 243013, construction of approximately 16,000 square foot, multipurpose group assembly building and related parking on 15.11 acres. Zoned RM, located along Sheville Highway. Trustees of the Johnson Road Church of Christ are the applicants. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you stated, the applicant is proposing to add an approximate 16,000 square foot multipurpose building to this property. As part of their plan, they're also proposing to add pervious pavement to their existing and proposed and proposed parking areas. There were a number of comments on the site plan. From a planning and zoning standpoint, our comments have been addressed. I believe Mike might have a couple of things he wants to discuss, so I'll turn it over to him for any further comments.
So the church, the existing church is already there. They're proposing to build a gymnasium multipurpose area here and then redo all of their parking lots. And this is one of those sites, you know, you just have to improve what you're proposing to do. Make sure that you treat the stormwater and everything else. So they're proposing to essentially redo all of their parking lot with these pavers. And they're very expensive. They do a great job, but you have to excavate down a lot below them to make sure the water, these pervious pavers allow the stormwater to percolate through the stone, the paver parts at the top, and then go into the ground. So there's going to be a lot of blasting that's going to need to go on, and we're tickle pink with this design. It's a great design. It's just that we think it's a little overkill. But, you know, we're happy to work with them on whatever they're wanting to do, as long as it meets the county standards. So, you know, having to, I'll go back. So this is their existing parking, parking drive aisle, more parking back here. They're going to be redoing some of this area in the back, and they'll be building the gymnasium in this area. So we're okay with it. It's just you can see the rocks already on the surface. It's a really rocky ground, and to make the pavers work, you have to have a lot of depth. And so that's where we're saying it might be a little expensive of a design, but we're willing to work with them either way. This design meets our standards, I'll say that.
Question, please, Mr. Chair. So Mike, great that they want to do these pervious pavers. I think everybody in here is for that. But of course, there's the cost and technical issues that they may find as they're getting down there. So what would be the backup plan and what problems would, if they go to the backup plan, what problems would that create?
Right. So let me go to the grading sheet. So what we initially proposed, they have this large area up front. We said, why don't you just resurface the parking areas, re-stripe them, have everything sheeted towards the front, and put a stormwater pond up front? Because it already forms a natural, you could see the elevations all around it on either side with this parking lot addition. Why not just berm it up, put a surface pond, wet pond right there? But they said that they had some trouble with that and would rather do the pavers. So I was like, okay, we'll work with you either way. It's just we think it's going to be very costly.
I think what I just heard, his question was, they get started and they run into, well, I should have listened to Mike first time. What would happen if they get started and realize this is going to be very expensive? Would they have to bring his plan back, or can they work that out with you guys?
As far as the drainage of the site, you know, if they were to get in that situation, as long as they weren't changing any of the design elements, like the location of the building, those kind of things, I think we could handle a revised drainage plan without having to bring it back to the Planning Commission. Now, if they start changing the location of the building, reduce the number of parking space, things like that, that might have to come back. But if it was just a drainage plan, I think we could handle that without having to bring it back.
And I've heard that the paver parking improvements most likely will be more expensive than the building itself, which is a big ticket item, so.
As the developers, I believe you're here, I believe all of y'all are here, you might want to have questions for them if they'd like to come forward. You know, if you'll show that picture of the rock again that you see out across there, a lot of times when you run into that situation, like you see over there, a lot of times that is above-ground boulders too that can be moved. But I just want to hear their interpretation, what you want to say here. I mean, I come from Rockville, so I know what rock is. Sometimes you can move the rock, and sometimes it's boulders and there is soil there. I've lived in it all my life. Sometimes you just have to blast. So I just, I want to hear your interpretation.
My name's Daniel Whitley. I'm, we're the civil engineers for the project with Honor Consulting Engineers. The reason we actually switched to the pervious pavers was because of rock. We had originally proposed with the parking lot renovation expansion, a bio retention area up in the front, like Mike had noted. But when the contractor got out there and started looking at depths of rock and how deep that was going to have to be, we actually looked at the cost of the stormpipe that we had, the asphalt cost that we had, and we actually looked, the depth on these pavers is actually not that significant, really. It's only about a foot and a half, two feet deep in most areas, because you're using the entire surface area, so your depth for your volume is not that significant. So we actually ran the numbers, and the contractor looked at all of that, and it actually works out cheaper to do this instead of doing traditional asphalt, storm boxes, pipe, because your pervious pavers are actually your conveyance system. So you don't have to have traditional concrete structures, pipe. So it actually worked out a little bit more better as far as cost-wise. So I hope that maybe explains it a little bit better, but.
It does. It's just that that's something that we'll need to review and make sure that we're acceptable with it. Volume-wise, you're storing your stormwater in the void spaces of the stone below.
Correct.
So we got to make sure that everything's all right. And he does have some underdrains throughout the parking areas that helps collect that stormwater that does percolate through the stone. But you do have to have a routine maintenance of vacuuming this out quite frequently to make sure that this doesn't become plugged and cause problems in the future. So that's, we're good with this design. It's just that you typically don't see it this large of an improvement for a smaller development, an increase in stormwater in pervious areas. So we're good with it. I'll say that.
Hope that answered the questions.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Any other questions?
And here is the, an image of 2024. This is the Hindu temple just to the north of their site. So it's under construction right now, and they're doing a lot of work. That rocky area that Commissioner Reed was talking about, they've had to blast and work on to get their site in, so.
You guys good with everything else?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we're happy with the design. It's a good design.
I'd move to approve it based on staff comments.
Motion to approve. Have a second. Further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? It has been approved. Moving down to item eight, staff reports and other business. A, moving on to you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The first item under other business are some zoning ordinance amendments for third-party traffic review, third-party traffic study review. As you may or may not be aware, the county recently signed a contract with Neil Schaefer to provide traffic engineering services, including third-party review of traffic studies. This does include traffic study scoping meetings with potential applicants, as well as review of those studies after they're submitted for their development projects. Our zoning ordinance does contain traffic impact study requirements, but there doesn't appear to be any real language regarding third-party review. So these amendments that you have would add this language and would also clarify that any fees associated with third-party review would be responsibility of the applicant and developer. I have put those amendments into your packets for your consideration. Now, this really, this would have to go before the Planning Commission, again, for a public hearing, and also to the Board of Commissioners for their approval, as this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. But what you can see is basically all that text in bold and red is language that we would be adding regarding the traffic studies, then the applicant's completing a memorandum of understanding, submitting it to, basically to staff during the pre-application meeting. After that scoping meeting is completed, then everybody would sign off on it. They'd be able to go ahead and then move forward with their traffic study. It also clarifies that any fees associated with that, again, would be paid directly by the developer to the third-party design firm that we have for that. Now, again, we kept that part of it pretty generic in the event that we ever changed the firm that we use. But what you're seeing here really is specific to the need to allow for third-party review of these traffic studies. In the future, I do anticipate there being an additional set of amendments coming to you. When our consultant took a look at this, he had some other recommendations of things that we should change. We haven't really changed these particular regulations since we adopted them back in 2013. So it'd be, it's nice to have a fresh set of eyes on them and make some changes that need to be made. But I can go into as much or as little detail as you want at this time, but we're excited about this. This is going to allow us to have even better and more thorough review of these traffic studies, having Neil Schaefer onboard. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And to stress, the developer will pay for the third party?
Correct.
Get anything from us tonight?
No, just basically, just you're okay to move this forward for public hearing. That's really it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug and Mike, what would happen if the developer chooses to use Neil Schaefer as their traffic study engineer?
Well, when we bid this out, when we had, when I say bid it out, we didn't bid, when we had the memorandum, sorry, when we had the request for qualifications that went out, one of the items that we put in the request for qualifications was that we wanted to affirm that their primary focus was working with jurisdictions, local municipalities and counties that didn't submit for, that didn't submit traffic studies for developers. So that was one of the keys. But in the event that did, the unlikely event that that did happen, they would have to recuse themselves at that point.
Gotcha, okay. So Neil Schaefer, basically, in a roundabout way, this is not the right verbiage I'm using, but they would be working for us?
Yes, yes. We are the client to them. That's correct.
And so when, would they get first? I'm trying to think of what Williamson County does. Williamson County, I believe, has a set of approved traffic engineer list that a developer has to pick from, right? And then I believe that unedited report, the first, the raw report goes to everybody. Because sometimes, you know, a developer will pay and have a study done, and then they'll go back and they'll massage the statistics a little bit the way they want them and then submit them. So does this take that, will Neil Schaefer see the raw data, I guess, or will they see an abridged version of the traffic report?
No, they will take their data, the raw data, and they have the ability to plug it into their own software and check it out. But before all that, we will have a memorandum of understanding to scope what needs to be evaluated.
That was my next question. We're going to establish limits on how far the study needs to reach out.
Yes, sir.
And that'll vary per project, right?
Yes, sir.
To major intersections or whatever our future comprehensive plan might dictate where a school may be or something like that, where heavy, or industry, where heavy traffic may be an issue.
Yes, sir. And then if you can see where what's going to be deleted, it says traffic impact study requirements. We're taking out impact study because that's a different level of a study.
Right.
There is also an traffic access study, which is just a getting people in and out safely. So for the smaller developments, smaller site plans, a lot of times that's all you need is just to, you know, how do you safely get people in and out with a site triangle and, you know? But, so that's another change.
Okay, one last question for my benefit and the committee's benefit. When you look at a traffic study, and Rutherford is a great example, as we are growing at the rate we are growing, what type of long, what kind of population growth formulas are there, I guess? Or how far in the future do they look in terms of a traffic study that's reviewed today and what that traffic may look like? Three years, six years, nine years? How long downfield do they anticipate?
It depends on the development. So there's a large development brewing in Commissioner Reed's area that most likely will have a 10-year build-out, which, you know, some other developments might have a three-year, a five-year. So they look at, they project how far out this development will take to grow. So if, say, we have a five-year study, they look at the background of what's happening today, what happens without this development in five years, and then what happens with this development, I mean, what happens to the traffic in the area with this development? So they're looking at three things on this, and so they're, you know, it depends on the individual project, how far out.
Okay, so you mentioned on how the development may grow.
Yes, sir.
Do we also then anticipate as the county may grow in terms of schools or industry or things like that?
Right. That was one of our questions we had for our consultant. What happens when there's more growth in the area during that timeframe that this development, the particular development you're looking at, happens? That is a case where we could get them to re-update their traffic study.
Okay.
So there's a new industry coming in next door. There's a new commercial impact or whatever. So, yeah, we have the ability to re-establish boundaries on when we need to update.
Okay, so, again, each study is going to be custom?
Yes, sir.
And each one is really going to be dependent upon your staff's or your department's global view of the area, right? You'll dictate the year's amount to look at and both project development phases versus county growth around that area too.
Yes, sir, right. So each project is its own study.
Gotcha, thank you.
I don't know if this is appropriate at this particular point in time, but we looked at a couple of developments way out in the boundaries last month, if I'm not mistaken. And I think they were deferred, actually. And both of them impacted a particular road, and they were looking at expanding that road or building, in essence, a new road in front of it. Does this cover similar situations, maybe in a residential situation to where there's a larger development going on a road that may not, that may not be suitable for that large? So that traffic study would say, you need to build a new road?
Yes, sir.
That would be part of the cost of development.
Right. We look at the levels of service of the intersections, which is important, but also the road itself.
Thank you.
And I will say, just to kind of piggyback onto that, in the situation that you were talking about where there were multiple projects along the same road, we actually put some verbiage in there regarding the ability for shared cost amongst the proposed development projects. It's on the second page there, that, right in the middle of the page, it says, "Costs will be shared amongst the proposed involved development projects on a prorated basis," I may reword that a little bit, "relative to the number of forecasted trips using chip generation data, et cetera, et cetera." So there's the ability for them to kind of do one big study, as opposed to one study for them, one study for them, then they're trying to coordinate the two. So that might make it a little more simplistic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I was trying to think and listen at the same time, so if you've already said this, I apologize, but does this language give you the latitude to be able to, if a traffic study's not required, we can still? a traffic study's not required, we can still use their services so that we can have a comprehensive view of the areas and the potential impacts as things, even if they're small developments or that may not require traffic, uh, traffic study? And I see where the language has been adjusted, where traffic impact study was taken out, so traffic study is very broad to allow us for traffic assessment.
It could be like an impact assessment or something like that, a, a lower threshold, if you will, yes. And part of what's probably gonna come at a later date are some additional amendments to kind of flesh that out a little more, cause right now, it really just talks about impact studies. But, uh, the way they handle their studies, there's a couple of different levels, so we'd like to be able to reflect that in here as well.
I just wanted to allow us to be able to have those consultations on, if you get 10 or 12 small developments coming in, or, or some businesses, local businesses, things like that, and it could impact when they all come, when they're all developed out, and just wanna have the, you know, if they can have that comprehensive view and they're looking at that broader area, I think that would benefit us in those ways.
Yes, so we will have the developers pay for the traffic impact studies or traffic access studies, but we will have commissioners, a, a section of our budget that has engineering consultant fees, so we can use, use them for other, other projects.
Okay, good, good.
Traffic signals, anything like that.
Okay, just wanna make sure that language supported that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have some questions from more of a contracting standpoint. This is a, essentially a one-vendor system. Is there a time on this, uh, contract that, in which we renew it again, and what is that time?
It's just, I think it's, I think it's renewable up, it's a, was it a five-year contract? I think it's a five-year contract, and then we have the ability to update it for, uh, a year or two after that, and then we'll have to do the whole process over again.
So if there are, if we have concerns of quality or want, I mean, is there a way for us to find a different person to do that instead of this firm?
There's an escape clause, yes, we have to give them, I can't remember.
I forget, off the top of my head, or something like that.
Something like that, I mean, there's a time, specific time limit that we say, your services no be, no longer be required after this date.
So have the fees that they are going to charge been determined to be competitive with other firms, uh, of, of similar quality?
It's what other municipalities and other governments are charging. So we looked at what Williamson County is charging for their third-party consultant to review, it's essentially the same thing.
Yeah, and this firm that we're using actually handles Murfreesboro's too. They, they do, you know, work for Murfreesboro, they do work for several municipalities and counties in this area, so they're pretty much comparable to what they're already doing.
One more question, if, if there's conflict between the results of Neil Schaefer's review and the developer's traffic consultant, who settles that?
It's a cage match.
Thunderdome, right.
Okay, I just, I, I mean, I would assume the county would or make a decision, best decision, but I just wanna make sure there's language in there for that as well.
We're the authority, that we, we would evaluate both parties and, and we would be the deciding.
And honestly, we'd bring those, if there was some sort of a conflict like that, ultimately, those kind of development projects, those come here before you at the planning commission, and I think ultimately you'd be the ones to make the decision, based on our recommendations.
And part of the reasoning behind that is, we, we all know, and I've done traffic impact studies, that having that local knowledge is so valuable, to know how to distribute that traffic, but the distribution and the projection of that traffic is very subjective. And so a distribution that says, I'm gonna go 231 south when I leave this development versus going 231 north, that can get very sticky very quick because I'm making my best judgment, engineering judgment, on which direction I think that traffic's gonna go, and just wanna make sure those things can be resolved easily.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we had a, a, a meeting with, uh, with the representative from Neil Schaefer the other day about a, a large development where that very topic was discussed, and we've actually are gonna make some recommendations to the, the developer about some other things to look at and some changes to make in that regard.
So, yeah, we, we look at, you know, we have to get our crystal ball out too.
Yep.
Because, you know, where are these kids supposed to be going to school in the future? Where will people be employed? You know, we have to make assumptions, so that's.
And for those that may not have read, I'm, I'm sure we've read more than we care to read of those things, but, you know, you have the AM, the, the midday and the PM distribution of traffic, and those can be wildly different and vary which volumes go where. So those are very, like I said, that's based on engineering judgment and their best assessment of the area, which goes back to the benefit of having a local firm per- prepare those reports, but we don't always get to do that. And so when that, when that discussion is, I've been in those discussion meetings before, why did you distribute traffic this way? Just wanna make sure there's a process in there to cover us on who, who settles that.
Well, that's, that's what we think, that the third-party consultant will be very beneficial, you know? So we, we, we were talking about another development where, um, the first one, we were gonna use a third-party consultant, and, uh, do, does this make sense? You know, you've got 45% going this way, 35 going this way, you know, we, we have to look at everything.
Well, I can see that being very beneficial for the third-party to make their own assessment and then be able to ask those intelligent questions of, why did you distribute traffic this way? We kind of see this because of this. And I think that will help strengthen better quality projections of what we're looking at. Overall, it should, I believe it will, but it's, it, but there are some issues in there that could be contentious at times, so, so, okay, good deal.
That's, that's the, the cage match clause.
That's what I was saying, as long as it's in there, that would be good. All right, thank you.
On the traffic studies, I'm so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one, one more follow-up. We're not reinventing this wheel. These type, this type of language is in other planning commissions at larger counties.
Yes, I creatively reused some of this language to, and to, to place into our ordinance, yes.
So, in essence, that should, if it's working other places, it should work here, and that should diffuse some of the objections that may come up at our public hearings.
Yes, to answer your question simply, yes, sir.
Y'all might remember, probably two months ago, when I told engineer up here, I have a lot of respect for that I've done with these traffic studies. And the reason I'm done with the traffic studies is I don't know of a single artery in this county that's not already overworked. So for me, the only good we're getting out of a traffic study is getting in and out of these new developments. That, to me, is the only thing that's helping us with. The condition of the roads is more important, and you give me some relief on that, Mike, at that night. So I'm comfortable that we're doing the core drilling and making sure the dump trucks and the cement trucks are not gonna really harm us. During this last election, I witnessed less than, right at 11% of our county cares. And until they care more than I care about it, we're gonna continue to approve based on what our county government says we will do. If, if these plats stand on their own, and I like the word, by rights, I can develop this piece of property based on what we said we're gonna do, we're gonna continue to overload our arteries. Traffic studies are gonna continue to be manipulated to say, is it gonna cause a problem? We already got a problem. I don't know if a traffic study one, it taking convince me is not gonna create us an issue. So that's outside of our scope as a planning commission, until the citizens wanna do something about it and say, enough's enough, and we're gonna have to be burdened with the cost of improving the roads that we have. The only good a traffic study will help me is to determine, can this development take the traffic in and take it out of that development? Am I missing something here? Just help me understand what I missed.
No, sir, that's, that's the part of the puzzle, that's part of it. So, uh, along with the comp plan that, that Doug's been working on, uh, with GNRC, there will be a long-range transportation improvement plan. So we're gonna identify major arterials, uh, collectors, local roads, any things like that, that needs definite improvement and kind of create a list of things that we need to work on.
Yeah, for me, I'm already done that, as far as engineering, where I'm gonna go in the morning time, if it's coming to the square, if it's going to Eagleville, if it's going to Nashville. I think about what time of day it is, and based on my previous experiences of going that route, whether or not I'm gonna go a different route already. So we are already overloaded, and I appreciate the long-range plan, I think that will really help with this study. Thank you, Mike.
Baby steps, we're, we're making baby steps.
Thank you. Since we're in other business, this is a good other business topic. Planning Commissioner Bogel and Thompson both stimulated the thought. One, Commissioner Bogel talked about multiple developments on the same stretch of road. Mr. Thompson talked about, how do we improve those roads? So I'm, I'm going back in my memory bank several years when we, this body, had a, uh, educational session where we invited city of Murfreesboro folks to talk about how they pay for road improvements, and I'm going from memory, and I don't even know if they still enact this particular program, but as, if, as it was explained back then is, if the developer owns X amount of frontage road, he has to put up a bond, and if I'm talking out of school, just give me the body language, they put up a bond, right? For improvements in that road. So in Lee's case, where you have multiple developments on a long stretch of road that may one start in 2025 and the next one be 2030, five years difference, can you, can we legally, do we have the power, can we enforce or, or start a plan like that where developer one has to put a bond out for his frontage, and then that just builds up down the road until the last guy finally develops, and then we come through and take all that money and redo the whole road?
That, that's what the city does right now.
Right, okay.
And that's what we would like to do, but we're gonna have to get the help of our legal department to incorporate that.
So what stops that, what stops us from doing that right now? Is that a, is that a county, is that a state ordinance that the county can't do that? Or, and, and I'm catching you off-guard, Nick, this may take some research and come back to us next month, but.
I'm not, I'm not sure, off, off the top of my head, no, I'm not sure. It might just be as simple as that the will of the commission hasn't further wanted to do this, or it hasn't come up yet, is what I'm saying. And now that it's coming up, it may spurn some, uh, looking at it.
Okay.
You know, it might be worthwhile to have that tool in our toolbox.
Yeah, I, I think it's worth at least exploring, A, if legally we can do it, and B, why not enact that? If this, if cities and other counties are doing that, why not have that additional tool to have developers just, just pay for their frontage part? Now, I don't know what we do, you know, at the end of that long road, if it needs a light or, or, or an intersection improvement? I mean, we're, we're kind of making them improve that now, right?
Yes, sir, with the traffic studies.
Okay, so, so you kind of, we kind of have the power to do that now. I'm not sure how difficult it would be to just move that road improvement all the way down in front of all the developments, so.
Right.
I, I think it's worth looking at.
Oh, yes, sir.
So, Nick, I, I would ask you to see if there's, if there's a hurdle from a legal standpoint, why we could not enforce such a plan? Got a month, about that.
So that, that would be the case when I was a consultant, private consultant, uh, over 10 years ago. So we would submit a plan to the city, they would say, okay, you need to make these improvements in front of your development and, or whatever, or you can pay funds in lieu of and go into the kitty, and then the city can take that money and, and make wholesale improvements after they've built up enough in the war chest.
Yeah, I would think we would discourage immediate improvement, because then you have a patchwork of.
Right.
Yeah, this is four-lane, two-lane, two-lane, oh, this guy just developed, so it's four-lane. You don't want a patchwork system like that, so you wanna wait till the last guy's done and then redo the whole thing, okay?
I'd just like to make one comment. You, you see those things that are, are red, it doesn't mean it's written in blood or carved in concrete. This, this is a step forward in our long-term comprehensive plan to look at what this county should look like in the future, not presently or not behind, but this is part of that process, and I commend our staff and our planning department for looking at these things and getting ahead of the curve, if we can call it ahead of the curve. But this, although it's an adjustment to what we have, can also be adjusted in the future as the future continues to develop. So I'd just like to say, great job, I'm very appreciative of you guys looking at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Just as you were saying, Mike, I, I had to, to drive in Rutherford County right now, an individual has to have a sense of humor, I think, really, if you're gonna survive. This morning, coming in, coming down U-Salem, State of Tennessee is doing construction, as all of you know, and they've done a lot of planning just to move traffic before they can do the construction. Coming down that road, they had moved everybody over way up there. Of course, nobody pays any attention to the signs way back here, they do not get over till they get up there. But I was watching that, that traffic parted, just like the children of Israel going across the Red Sea. They parted, backed up traffic all the way to World Outreach for one individual to get across that traffic to go into Dunkin' Donut to get his donut. Now, that's planning, now I'm telling you, and that's what we've got every morning and every afternoon in our traffic system, that no matter how much we can put in all of this and how much all of our planning that we do, all it takes is a hunger for a donut and the whole traffic stops. And it's quite interesting, and I, like I said, I said, you've gotta have a sense of humor just to get through some of this. And here we are, trying to, to fix all of this and how to do it, and, and it amazes me what we can do and what we have gotten into with just the development in this county. I believe you got one more item there.
Yes, sir, it's a couple more things, actually, something that's not on the list. Uh, just a quick update on the Flaglot private easement regulations. I don't have anything to present to you today. I will say, though, that I have received some information from one of our local engineering firms, I've received some feedback from them, I've received some feedback from, uh, gentlemen in the, uh, kind of the auction industry, if you will, for lack of a better word. Also, we've been kind of conversing back and forth with the representative from the building community as well, kind of explained in a little more detail what we're looking for. So things are moving forward, I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. The last thing, and this kind of goes back to what Commissioner Kush was just talking about as far as training and things. Uh, I did send out an email, I guess about a week ago, regarding some potential dates for a planning commission training at Consolidated Utility District. They've been gracious enough to allow us to use their facility again, so we appreciate them for that. Uh, the dates they gave us are the week of October the 15th, basically the 15th through the 18th. I have received word from, from a, a few of you, but if you could, if you haven't responded, if you could go ahead and, and make sure you send me an email. Also, if, if, as part of that email, I asked for, you know, potential topics, water-related topics that you may wanna discuss that would help out with Jason and his team, you know, as far as who need to, who to involve and, and, you know, timeframes and topics and things. So if you could do that, I would appreciate, I'd like to get that shored up here, here within the next few days. So, uh, that was pretty much all I had from a staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Just a reminder that our next commission meeting will be October the 14th. That's an evening meeting at 6 o'clock here in this room. Anything else that should have come before us? If not, we're adjourned.